601, Lindsey, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Chairperson Philip Goldstein.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Marty Jost. Commissioner Tom Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Wendy Newland.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Lewis.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Michael Lowry.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Renzo Bianchi.
Thank you. Commissioners, any amendments to the agenda? Staff, anything? No. Okay, administrative, we have one regular commissioner missing tonight, and Renzo Bianchi is going to make his formal debut here voting as alternate in place of Vice Chair Marty Jost. Public comment, this is an opportunity to address the commission on anything that is not on the agenda. I believe we have at least one person signed up for general public comment. As a point of order, the business items that we have, generally if something does not allow public comment, we still allow public comment during the general session. So I believe we have one person signed up for general public comment. Is there anybody else, just so I know? Nope, okay, come up, please. State your name and address, and you have three minutes, please.
I live at 40496 Hayneville Court here in town. I am representing Guide Our Growth. And I would like to provide some comments for the organization. The proposed land use code amendments that we were item 7A, 7B, and 7C. Round A, we want to complement town planning staff. We're identifying this list of issues and proposing high-level issues to address each one. We're not tonight endorsing every aspect of future amendments. I understand, Commissioner, we'll see. The commission's not going to go into granular detail on each of the items. Overall, we want to say that we're pleased and broadly in agreement with the content of the Catholic A, which details various initiatives. We would like to provide input by reasons of these amendments. From our perspective, highest priority should be relief options, major division, land development overlay criteria, preliminary flat expiration date, site plan expiration date, soft story, apple story, working ratio, dark sky, corporate. Next priority is our common consumption in the district, building heights, harmony for the local standards. Now, I'll acknowledge that these priorities have nothing to do with the level of effort town staff estimate each amendment will require to detail and implement. But having said that, we want to indicate Guide Our Growth's willingness to construct a review of the town staff and planning commission in the coming weeks and months to help define specific commitments that will need collaboration to implement. For example, for the relief option amendment, clarify what qualifies as variance is going to take some work to define. So again, to this, the staff, we're putting this together. And what we're seeing with you, I think, is a lot of things.
Thank you, Gary. Anybody else signed up or otherwise that wishes to address the commission on anything not on the agenda? Very good. We'll close the general public comment. Commissioners, the consent agenda consists only of approval of the September 17th, 2024 meeting minutes. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Here none do I have a motion on the consent agenda.
I move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The consent, somebody speak. Consent agenda passes on a 5-0 vote. Now, the items, the next two items on the agenda also have public comment. First item is item 6A, excuse me, Old Town Alley Right-of-Way Vacation, Jay.
Thank you, Chairperson Goldstein. Good evening, members of the commission and the public. So first off, in accordance with Table 2.1 of the hearing process of the land use code, basically, this goes before you for a review and recommendation to town council. It will then go on for a reading at council, and then in a subsequent meeting for a decision. The Town of Timneth's Public Works Department is requesting to vacate an unused 20-foot alley located along the eastern edge of lots 2 through 12, block 7, parallel to Kern Street. Originally platted in 1920, this alley was first vacated in accordance, or vacated by ordinance number 2 in 1967. In 1973, the area was de-annexed to the county, and the Alley Right-of-Way was vacated again in 1975 as a result of the de-annexation according ordinance number 2, 1975, Exhibit B. The area was then re-annexed in 1976, seemingly reinstating the original 1920 plat without a recorded vacation of the alley. The 1988 Old Town plat noted that portions of the alley may have been vacated, but it did not provide a detailed legal description clarifying which sections were affected. This lack of specificity has led to some ambiguity regarding the status of the alley. Based on staff analysis, it appears that the eastern 20 feet of lots 2 through 12 in block 7 may have once again been treated as vacated, although no formal record of this vacation was made when the properties were re-annexed in 1976. For nearly half a century, property owners have treated this right-of-way as if it were vacated, as evidenced by the construction of outbuildings and sheds within the platted alley area. This longstanding use of the alley by adjacent property owners has created a de facto precedent of the alley's vacation, although it was never officially recorded. Staff has reviewed the history and current use of this Alley Right-of-Way and determined that it is no longer needed. Additionally, there have been no objections from referral agencies or property owners. So the site was properly noticed. The property is located south of the Augmentation Pond, east of Kern Street, north of Fourth Avenue in Old Town, on the western edge of the Old Town subdivision. It is zoned as Old Town Residential R1. The future land use for property in question is, according to the comprehensive plan, is downtown core, and this vacation is consistent and does not conflict with the comp plan or any other adopted town plans or policies. So in addition to the requirements of this code, the site must be consistent with the following criteria outlined in Section 2.9, .12, .9 of the Land Use Code. So the criteria are as follows. The vacation is consistent with the comp plan and other adopted town policies and plans, including any adopted transportation plan or streets, roadway plan. This vacation is consistent and not in conflict with the comp plan or other adopted town plans or policies. Criteria 2, the land may, to be vacated, is no longer necessary for public use and convenience. Response, staff feels this is affirmative. The land to be vacated is no longer necessary for public use and convenience. Criteria 3, this resolves longstanding structural encroachment into the right-of-way. Affirmative. This resolves encroachment of a number of accessory structures that encroach into the right-of-way. Criteria 4, the vacation will not leave any landlocked parcels. Affirmative. All parcels have access on Kern Street and or Fourth Avenue, respectively. Criteria 5, facilities facilitates road and right-of-way exchange if the applicant is requesting vacation of mapped rights of way and the actual constructed road is located elsewhere on the applicant's property. This criteria is not applicable for this vacation request. Criteria 6, this creates an opportunity to provide for development that is more consistent with the comp plan and the land use plan. And again, this is not applicable, this criteria does not apply. So the staff would recommend approval, or we would recommend that you make a recommendation to town council for approval. That your, as the commission, your next step would be, yeah, that would be basically to make a recommendation to town council for approval, approval with conditions or denial. That concludes my response.
All right, thanks, Jay. Has anybody signed up for public comment on this? Or does anybody wish to speak on this particular? Okay, I'm going to open up public comment first, Jay, and then we're going to bring it up here. So if you could, please, ladies first, come up, state your name and address, even though I knew your name. And you have three minutes, Laura.
Thank you. My name's Laura Olive, and myself and Steve own the property at 4020 Kern Street, which abuts.
Could you speak on the mic, please, Laura, just closer, just so we, even we can hear you, let alone the thousands of people out there in the community tuning in for this tonight?
You bet. My, my name's Laura Olive. Steve and I own the property at 4020 Kern Street. It's the modular, older modular backing to the piece of land that he's talking about, the alleyway. And I believe that, you know, we have a large lot. It's about 12,000 square feet. It sits, I really do object to vacating that alley easement. The road on Kern, when it was paved in 15, sits up higher, and there is effectively, with Fourth Street being paved and with the augmentation plant, pond, it's effectively a dam. So we're, we sit in a bowl there. Eventually, we want to improve that property and build another home or something there. But in any case, we won't be able to get drainage to the public way because we're sitting about three, three to four feet below Kern Street. So I feel like if you, we need to have some assurance that we're going to be able to get our outfall out. Also, unlike what this gentleman said, Jay said, I feel like that easement, or that that alleyway could make a very nice intermodal walkway, or bike lane, or whatever, which is part of the comprehensive plan. It would, it directs people right down to the Artisan Village. So anyway, that's what I would have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Circle back to that. Yes, sir. Jay, think, come, state your name and address, please, and you have up to three minutes.
Good evening. Greg Rosing, 5200 Fourth Avenue. And the alleyway actually runs through the loafing shed on my property. The loafing shed actually extends onto my neighbors to the east and has been there since approximately 1934. This is based on the signature on the rafters of the milking barn that's attached to it. And so I purchased the property in 1996. The survey that we obtained at that time showed that the alley was vacated, and so we've been under the assumption that it was vacated quite some time ago. Additionally, if you look at the county records, the property that Laura owns and the property north of that, the legal description, descriptions actually include the alleyway, which informs me that at some point it must have been vacated already. So I know that, based on, I used to be the chair of the PZC back in the early 2000s, before all the growth started happening around here. And I do understand by searches at the time that many of the older records have been lost or misplaced for the town. So it may have been vacated, and those records are just lost. Additionally, Laura mentioned the drainage from her property to Fourth Avenue. Actually, any drainage that comes off of her property through that alleyway is going to pool on my property without some sort of raising the roadway considerably, probably at least two feet. And so that's going to create another issue if you go ahead and do not vacate that. And in addition, it will create a financial hardship for me because I will have to demolish that loafing shed. If you look at Google Maps, I'm not sure when it appeared, but that property is listed as the historic Timneth Dairy. And so I'd like to preserve that aspect of the, the character of Timneth as much as possible.
Okay. Anything else, Greg? No, great, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this issue? Yes, same thing, please. Name, address, and up to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Chris Alberico, and I live at 4014 Kern Street. Our property is situated in a unique way. We're, we're set back from the property at 4006. And so that alleyway, I'm recommending that the planning commission approve the vacation of that, that alleyway because it would cut right through my property, which sets back sort of in between Kern Street and the new parkway. So, yeah, and breaking that property up would be a real challenge and a problem. So I'm thankful that the team has done the studies on this, and I'm definitely hoping and recommending that you guys approve the vacation of that alleyway.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this?
My name is Steve Woodall, and I live at 4020 Kern Street. I'm a partner in 4020 Kern, kind of subject property up to the alleyway. I, I think that, one, it's a very complex piece of property there. That whole quadrant is, is, has been cluttered. I guess I speak, one, two, it was brought to TST's attention over the years that this alley existed and that this should be cleaned up prior to the construction of Fourth Street. And, and it was brought to their attention in a re-survey that we did back in July, I believe, of '23. Our surveyor went and said, there's a problem. This either needs to be cleaned up or addressed prior to the, the construction of Fourth Street. That did not happen. So kind of in de facto now, we're solving problems. And I think that what you'll know about Kern Street and Fourth Street between the parkway and the augmentation pond is that in haste to build the parkway, the augmentation pond, and also Fourth Street, we, we were put in compromised positions. Laura brought drainage, which I know isn't the issue now, but access is. And also easement and apportionment of that property. Currently, as it stands, as I see, there is no recorded easement on the property with the way that things flowed in and out of annexation. So I would recommend that this be tabled or for more discussion and more research now that we admit that it actually exists.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this? Yes.
Do I hit something? Nope. Okay, go. I'm Raymond Wright, 5250 Fourth Avenue. I do border the property that's to be, yeah, vacated. Greg's loafing shed, in our deed on our land, when that shed falls down, 15 feet of that property reverts to us. I think he's aware of that. And it's been that way for 30 years, so we're not worried about it. But for him to tear down that shed would be senseless. There's no need for that. We don't want the property. He's taking care of it. His chickens are eating the grass. We don't have to worry about it. But at some point, that building ever falls down or had been reconstructed, and it would, that prop, 15 feet of property, to the point of the north point of that loafing shed would revert back to us. We're not in a hurry for that, so that's not an issue for us. As far as drainage, good luck, Chuck. All right.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this? Okay, we're going to close public comment. Staff, and this includes our town attorney. A couple of things I think, like, I'd like, for one, I thought either something Jay mentioned or in our packet that all property owners had been contacted, and there were no substantive issues. That's, that's number one. Number two, and I realize this is complicated, during, is it, and this is maybe a question for staff and the town attorney jointly, was the property, we've heard one property owner that I, only that I believe is opposed to this, was that property purchased during a period when this had already been vacated, which may or may not come into play? And third, I don't know how the, necessarily, that the parkway situation is any impact on this, but perhaps it does. But I agree, this is a very complicated issue. Oh, I know what the, the third thing was, is how did this, just, I'm just curious if anything else, how did this come to our attention, finally, that this appeared to be in need of vacation once again? We've closed public comment, thanks. Staff, I imagine you can comment on that.
Mr. Chairperson, I can address the first question. So we're required by law to notify residents within so many feet of the action that we're asking to take place. So they were notified. Of course, people can bring their comments to the hearing. We had, didn't have anybody walk into our office or, or, you know, email us or give us a call expressing concerns. Doesn't mean that they don't have concerns like we're seeing today.
Okay, no, I understand, and I agree, that absent of something that says, so such and such a time before the meeting, you need to address those, then that's fine to come to the meeting. Carolyn Steffel, the town attorney, my, my comment about when the property was purchased, is that, in my naivety, does that perhaps have any bearing on this?
I don't know when it was purchased. I'm actually just looking up real quick on the Laramie County Click Recorder site. You know, unless it was purchased in that one small period where it was actually de-annexed, it probably is not going to be impactful as to, but I can get back to you in one second.
Okay, take, take your time on that. And then as to coming to our attention, how, back to you, Jay, how did this, just curious, how this came to our attention? That something dealt with 50 years ago and then dealt with once again is now on the radar again?
Chair, it was actually brought to my attention, one of the residents reached out to self, and I folded Mr. Stone in the conversation. And at that time, it was brought to our attention that there was actually prior research done by both town staff and TST staff, as mentioned by several of the residents. After we kind of did some digging and looking into the issue, we recognized that it needed to be cleaned up because it still is uncertain as we outlined in the staff report. Both Director Stone and I think that this is, if there's any good cases to vacate an alley, typically, we're very pretty hard on not meeting that criteria. This one seems to check most of those boxes in that instance. No existing utilities. There's some confusion about the, the history behind the alley, if it was vacated or not. There's encroachments of structures on the sites. So we went ahead and moved forward with this request because it didn't make sense to do, vacate one segment of alley from one property owner. So we felt it was in the best interest for the town to move forward with the request on the length of the alleyway.
Is the encroachment, now, I knew there was a fourth thing, I'm glad you said that. Is the, this encroachment issue, is this akin to circumstance? If, if something is not enforced within a certain period of time, it becomes, you lose that right?
You're referring to adverse possession?
Yes, that's it, thank you.
Yeah, you cannot adversely possess property against a governmental entity, so they did not acquire any rights by adverse possession against the town.
So explain that in layman's terms.
Okay, you can't adverse possess government property. You can't squat on government property and then get title to it by squatting on government property. So because it was a town right-of-way, they could not acquire ownership against the town under the state statute for adverse possession.
Okay, put, so this old guy from West Virginia understands the fact that it's been encroached upon, does that, that, that doesn't come into play? Meaning, that, that's not a factor, but?
It does not, unless they have a dispute with their, with their neighbor, and I don't know anything about that deed and the shed falling down and property ownership change, and I don't know anything about that. But as to the town, it's not relevant.
Okay. Did you, are you still looking on the other issue? Because I've got a question for.
Okay, the property was acquired first by Ms. Olive in 2013 and then transferred to a trust in 2015. So that would have been well after the time that it was re-annexed to the town.
Okay, so the, to my question admittedly, perhaps all point, is, is there, is there some precedent or some other circumstance such that it was acquired during a period when it was presumed to be vacated? Hence, one purchasing, it could have known that there was a vacation on that property.
Yeah, that's going to get too factually detailed to necessarily answer here, but it was after the time that the property was re-annexed in 1976, when that original 1920 plat was, was added back in. And there's a lot of probably contradictory evidence out there, and I have no idea what the title policy said when she purchased the property. So that's, that's going to be a question for that individual property owner, but I don't think that that date of acquisition changes anything about our analysis.
I tend to agree. Let me, yeah, let me stop here. Okay, Renzo.
I gotta figure out this mic. I, I just wanted to follow up on one of your questions, Phil, which I thought was really good. When land is vacated, who does the ownership of the land go to on that vacated land?
That's an excellent question. It is established by state statute, colored by statute 432302. And in this circumstance, it would go to the adjacent property owner that are the, those platted lots, lots 1 through, whatever. And that's under subsection 1A of that section. It's different than other vacations you might see. In other circumstances, it's divided down the middle of the street, and each property owner gets half of it. That's not the case in this circumstance because it was on the boundary of the original plat when it was dedicated. So it goes back to the land that was included in that plat at the time of dedication, which would have been 1920. And so it's going to go to those, those platted lots.
Okay. Can I do more follow-ups, please?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. One is then, if it is vacated and we needed easement rights on it to, all of a sudden, we decided that we had to bring a utility, something through that. And if it did fall to the ownership of the property owners, what rights would the town have to be able to do that easement?
So you could right now recommend approval with condition that the town reserve an easement. If you did not reserve an easement right now, it would be like any private property. So you would approach the property owner and ask to purchase an easement. If that wasn't successful, you would have a right of condemnation.
And then, could we bring that slide back up that showed Sunrise on it, please? Your little plot plan or screen? So you have Sunrise there to the right of it. And I assume above Sunrise, there might be other future commute, or future development plan for that.
Is Sunrise, is that correct?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm looking at the, yeah, that, that's easier for me to recognize. Sorry. So what we'd be doing, and part of where my concern is, and the question is, is if we were to vacate that, that becomes private property. I'm assuming, and maybe it's a bad assumption, but do, does? I'm assuming, and maybe it's a bad assumption, but do does the public have the right of way today to be able to walk that property to get from one street to the other street? Or do they all have to come down the way all the way down to Main Street, for example, to get there? I mean, I'm concerned that as we build more communities out there, you eliminate a kind of a right of way or whatever, you know, what you're talking about. So would would the impacts be for that?
So once it's vacated, yes, the public would not have the right to use that alleyway to walk. It would be private property.
Okay. Is that you were you asking just for your own edification? I'm not sure pertinent how?
I was trying to understand the vacation.
Well, I was you were in such a good role there. I was wondering if that was if that was pertinent. Be it for me, I always said everybody up here smarter than I am. I mean that. The drainage issue, Justin, I certainly understand the as unusual as this is, and to Wendy's point in a different context a while back about how long it takes to be on planning commission to see every possible thing that could come up. This is certainly a new one does. And I see the logic in this. Any idea how to Ms. Olive's question of statement about the drainage? How likely is it to there to be a drainage issue?
Yeah, I guess also through my 34 year career, I've never this is probably a unique situation I've seen too. But for alleys, typically alleys are more for access. They're not used for drainage ways typically. It may be part of the alley itself. So if there was a drainage way, you typically reserve some kind of a drainage easement on there. What is brought up at the meeting, of course, is some kind of concerns is whenever that property would develop, they would have to, you know, figure that out. But this has been a case that's been going on for, as you see, decades, decades. The findings, as was mentioned before, is this meets the findings, which is basically access, no need for other access. The drainage is a different thing that I guess would have to ask legal if that could be even considered. But it does meet the findings that's in the town code. And drainage is not one of the requirements.
Okay, have we had any, to best of anybody's knowledge, have we had any drainage issues? And admittedly, most of you don't have a lot of history. Unfortunately, I'm the one who has the most, and I certainly don't know. Does anybody know have there been any drainage issues?
Yeah, not of course, I've only been here a year, but talking to TST. And also, I do have another staff member. He's been here maybe twice as long as I have. Corey, he may be able to answer that question, but that's not our understanding that there hasn't with the alley has been caused any drainage issues.
There haven't been any drainage issues that have been brought to my attention since being on staff here at Timnuth that I'm aware of on current and forth.
Okay, thanks. Commissioners, other questions? Tom, I got a feeling this might be right up your alley, not to put any pressure on you.
Not really.
No pun intended either, by the way.
I understand that the concerns and certainly there's there if there was a drainage issue, there's there's a couple of different options that, you know, someone could follow and exactly how that goes. I suspect that the landowners who've lived there for quite some time, they probably know exactly what the drainage issues are and could tell us a little bit more if we wanted to allow it.
I don't know that we haven't heard any enough of that, but.
The chair may allow a question to be directed.
If somebody has something really pertinent to add to to our main question, please, to our main hang on a second, to our main question, have there been substantive drainage issues there that we could verify?
At 4020, I think that Raymond can speak to that and as can other homeowners that live that aren't present tonight. And that may be because they weren't notified because I was not notified. I do not believe my other neighbors were notified either here. We we found out about it from the sign, from the sign. But there there has always been an historical drainage in the in the eight years, 10 years that I've been involved in it. I believe that Raymond could speak to past drainage problems. And those have really been exacerbated over the last 15 years because when they came and paved Kern Street, they paved Kern Street high to allow for drainage to the north, the catch pan at the north. And they've also raised and done topical drainage on on 4th Street. There's no there's no subgrade drainage. Everything that that exists basically north of Lot 12, which is the corner lot, everything going from our property 4020 to the augmentation pond and from Raymond's property to the Parkway is subgrade to augmentation pond, Kern Street, and 4th Street. This was brought up a number of times during the subdivision process and of which you were present. And and Raymond, and I know that that his wife and I just recently talked about the fact that that the drainage, now that things are in place with the Parkway, 4th Street, Kern, and the augmentation pond, we have drainage is almost an impossibility to get to the public way. So if the if if the commission decides on the vacation of the alley, there certainly should be a provision for drainage for Kern Street properties and the other interior properties to be able to drain towards the Parkway. It's a challenge under any condition, but I believe from just limited work that that I've done on the property and other properties in the area, that if if there was a drainage easement allowed where the current alley easement is, notwithstanding your the the structure that you have, that that becomes somewhat problematic. But there should be some preservation because this is an interesting thing to me because it's brought about from the town and it's from the town to the town. And I think that there are interested parties when it comes to access and also drainage and also the impacts from all of these new big infrastructure projects and the impact that they've had on this whole quadrant of property in that area.
Thank you. Ray, do you hang on a second. Let me just no, Steve, thank you. Hang on a second. Ray, I when I said I have more history than anybody, I meant on this side of the bar. You have more on that side of the bar. What else can you offer? Carolyn, if it's okay, I want to continue. What else can you offer about drainage? I believe you were speaking, you were in favor of this vacation, but tell us about.
I'm in favor of the vacation.
Tell us about drainage, briefly.
If they have to build a house on that lot, it's their problem to correct their own drainage. They even have to put their own retention or release pond in there. It's not my problem. If it comes on me, it is their problem. But I don't want them to build a house that's going to cause a problem to our drainage, to Chris and Sandy's and the neighbor to the north of us. So if they build a house there, they're going to have to build it to conserve their property, not ours. So it's their their due diligence to correct that problem, not you or me or my neighbors. So it's it's up to them. If they want to have some house there, they're going to have to put some kind of impervious retention pond in that to correct the drainage. I don't know where they're getting off water running off the street into their property. I haven't noticed that. We've had problems with drainage in our area for 31 years. We had we have a sump pump in our basement that pumped for constantly for 10 years because of the low water. Now, since they put the retention pond in or augmentation pond in, that's all disappeared. And now that they got the street paved curb and gutters, we still have drainage problems, but it's not because of the street's too high, it's too low, it's just the way the property sits. So whatever water we get, it drains to the east, waters our grass and our trees. We're not concerned about it. We've been through excessive floods back in 92 or 94. We had water, 94, we had excessive water that spring. We had a little tree out there that stood about this tall and it was oh, the water was over that. Our neighbor was concerned about his. He went and rented two pumps to the all the the pump irrigation ditch east of his house was running so fast up here is he put two irrigation two sump pumps in it to pump the water out of the lagoon and it was backing up onto our property. So I went to the town at Fort Collins and got 200 sandbag just in case it ran back to our house. So we're more than happy that they got that drainage corrected for us. And that ditch that run east, that irrigation ditch, that was a mess for 40 years. So they got that corrected. Augmentation pond has corrected that problem. Far as drainage, anything we get far as heavy rain is not going to have an impact on anybody on Kern Street that I can see.
Okay, that's that's what I was looking for. That's your okay, yes, sir. One one more, and we're going to bring I'm going to bring it back up here.
Just to correct the previous statement, they did not raise 4th Avenue. They actually cut it down from the previous contour in order to pave 4th Avenue.
Okay, thanks.
Also, I just wanted to point out that he you guys are asking about access. The two properties north of mine, actually, the legal descriptions include the alleyway. So the way it stands now, there is not access through there currently.
Thank you, Ray. Okay. What else? Laura, if you can add if you can add something to what's already been said, but if if you're doing is repeating this, I want to move this along.
Sure, I understand. Frankly, there is a drainage issue there. That whole street is a dish. And it's not just me, it is Chris, and it's the people beyond beyond to the north are in a dish. And so if anyone ever wants to build anything in there, they're going to have to deal with it. It's not of our making. That that dish is not of our making. It's all infrastructure that started to be built around us that's created this. It was not considered. We were not given any consideration when those things went in for how are we going to drain these these this these properties? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners? Phil, I don't have any other questions. Any anything?
Jay, I just have a question. You said that you notify the people in the surrounding area about this situation, but I've heard one person say they weren't notified. How do we notify people about this?
Sure. So we generate a list of residents within so many feet, whatever the particular action is that it'll it'll tell us how many feet. So those it's not just residents per se, but it's the property owner. And whatever's on that list, so whatever address they have filed with the county, it could be a PO box, you know, it could be if it's owned by a trust, you know, it may not be the individual who lives there, but it would be the property owner. In addition, we also publish in the Coloradine and then post the sign on the near the property as well.
So I the question I want to ask jointly here of our town attorney and staff, this is not a this is not a development proposal per se. This is not anything that I'm inclined, I believe staff, despite the fact certainly never seen this before, I'm inclined that that staff's done a sufficient homework, if you will, on this and that this is this is warranted. One thing that I neglect to mention, I don't Laura Laura's comment about what other use this right of way might make, bike path or otherwise, I don't think that that has any bearing on this at all. Given that whether they did receive notice or didn't receive notice, the fact, as Jay pointed out, certainly within our our rights, our interest, their interest, our rights, if you will, to show up here tonight, having found out one way or the other. So given that there's I don't think there's any immediacy on this, would it be if commissioners agree, would it be warranted to postpone this and at least having heard things we've heard? And if we come back and say there's still in the in the infant wisdom of the town, there's still this seems warranted and we'll give it further consideration? Renzo?
Phil, I think your point is is great. I'd ask, though, when they do that consideration, that they also look at maintaining an easement capability?
Yeah, thanks. Carolyn, that seemed to be a no brainer, didn't it? And I I didn't it didn't sound like anybody had any objections about that, but I'm not looking for hands to go up or anything. No matter what, that sounds like a your when you brought that up in response to, I think, Renzo's original question, that seems like no matter what, a good idea, doesn't it?
Yes, so to answer the first question about whether you would want to continue this, you can continue the public hearing to a date certain so that the town does not need to go out and republish notice if you just want to continue continue this until your December 3rd meeting? Okay, you could also postpone it indefinitely and we'd have to go through the whole notice process. But I would say probably continue my recommendation would be to continue it to December 3rd, and then we can come back with answers to the additional questions. And then if we decide not to proceed, that can be the recommendation as well in the staff memo if for some reason they're not proceeding. In terms of reservation of easements, that can definitely be something that you can recommend and would just to clarify so we know what to come back with, would that be an easement for multimodal, so for pedestrian and bike crossing? Were you also thinking about an easement for drainage?
Well, I would think I would think the for e for drainage would be I wouldn't be concerned about we have the comp plan has plenty of considerations for multi modal. I'm not please, I'm not laughing at that. I just I think that would be a far, far secondary concern to the point of being somewhat immaterial to this, what else it could be used for. But I think the drainage, I it seems to me, again, with my naivety there, Tom, it seems to me like that would be an important consideration that everybody would be in favor of, perhaps a compromise of sorts.
Yeah, I think, though, it's important to point out that the town shouldn't be obligated to create a drainage. It may be there's other solutions to drainage there that we wouldn't want the town to be on the hook for.
That's a good point. That would seem to be something that the town can assure themselves of when they come back. Scott, what do you think?
I just want to plant an idea in your head. So you one of the questions you raised was the encroachments and, you know, was that, you know, squatters rights if you build a shed on this in the town, as as our counsel attorney pointed out, you can't do that against the government. One of the things I want to make you think about is if that was your direction to put in an easement, that raises the same concern. So if we record an easement, in theory, the town would be the, I guess, the grant grantee in that situation? Would we require those property owners to remove any of those structures within that easement, even if there was no commitment to put in any of that storm infrastructure? So that's one of the challenges of, at least in this circumstance, that there is encroachments within the alley right of way. If it's not vacated, one of the things the town could do is notify property owners to remove those structures to preserve that right of way for whatever purposes in the in the future. So I don't know if there's too much to distinguish between the two, between an easement and not recording an easement, I would hope have a purpose and intent. And so I just want to be mindful of that. I do appreciate Commissioner Wood's comment about there wouldn't be any commitment by the town to put any storm infrastructure in that easement. We're just holding or reserving that area. But again, something that something to be mindful of.
Yeah, I appreciate it. My question about the, as you aptly called it squatters rights, we would have called it that in West Virginia for sure where I'm from. That seemed to me was a secondary it sounded to me like the the one structure in there is ready to fall down. In any event, not ready to fall down. Okay, we seem seem to have some disagreement on that to that.
I would clarify that part of the reason that that structure is being talked about is the property owner wants to have certainty that they can do improvements so it doesn't fall down. And so they can, you know, it's a historic structure or what have you. I think showed pictures of when it was constructed. So I think there's some certainty with other property owners about those improvements that they've done on their property that the town wouldn't come back and require them to remove those encroachments on their property.
My colleagues that know the most about this, let me see again, smarter guys than I am, the and I, by the way, I thought this was going to be the quickest issue on the agenda tonight. The. agenda tonight. The, and Scott, help, help us all with this. Can we, Carolyn, have an easement with the understanding, I'm always looking for a compromise here, so, with an understanding of the, the property owners, that should we need to exercise, worst-case scenario with that easement, is that, that's okay, use that language, then their property may have to be moved. I mean, is that, is that a viable consideration here?
I guess I'm just going to go back to the intent. I think the intent is trying to find some common ground of, of a condition that there be an easement recorded for the purposes of storm infrastructure. Then the question would be, outside of the folks in this room, somebody would come forward and say, hey, we need the, the town to enforce that easement and notify property owners that they need to remove those structures for said storm infrastructure. So, I think that's the question that we need to think about is, what are the long-term implications of that intent behind the easement of, of kind of finding some common ground. I would also note that typically, as some of the residents stated, that in most developments, that's the responsibility of the developers to deal with onsite detention of water. So, this is not unusual, but again, I'm trying to struggle with a situation where the town would come in and build a storm infrastructure in this instance, especially with the curb and gutter that were on Fourth.
To Tom's cautionary note.
Right. It could be expensive. And I don't think the town should necessarily be on the hook for that without a lot of thought.
Okay, so I'm looking over.
Yeah, recording an easement wouldn't require you to build, reserving an easement wouldn't require you to build.
So, can we, can we do that? Is that a viable recourse? Meanwhile, that could be a condition now and, or it seems to me, again, help me commissioners, it seems to me that given the fact that we've fifty years, this apparently has been up and down as an issue, it can certainly wait a few more weeks.
Yeah, I would just recommend, since this is new evidence, a new testimony, I'd like to go back and take a look at it, this information, and then we can address your questions a little bit better. Instead of trying to figure it out, a dais would be my recommendation.
Bingo. Bingo. That's exactly what I was looking for. I hope we're, everybody's in concurrence with that. That, again, notice or not notice, they're here, they express the concern. I think this warrants it if this was a development proposal, but we might or might not. But this, the ramifications of this, it can certainly wait a couple more weeks. Good. Thank you, Justin. Scott, sit down. Jay, you guys, it's unacceptable.
That's great. Yeah, there's, this is, again, brought on just by interest from the adjacent property owners, and it's been a longstanding issue. I don't know why a few more weeks wouldn't hurt anybody to take a second look at it.
Terrific. Commissioners, good with that. Do we, do we need a motion to carry the, and we, the motion has to be to continue this till December third, otherwise, we're starting all over again.
That's exactly right.
Okay, so commissioners, I need a, I need, if I could, I need a motion on business item six A, Old Town Alley Right-of-Way Vacation, to continue this, this business item till the December third meeting, which we now, we, we definitely are going to have, right? Okay.
Yeah, I'll do that if you'd like, Phil.
To that effect.
And you're also, just to clarify, you're also continuing the public hearing, not just the business item, the public hearing and the business item.
At that meeting, there will be another, okay, another.
We'll take, we'll open it as a continued public hearing and accept new public comments.
Okay, this is a tabling per se, this is a, continuation tabling, one and the same. We've done that. So seldom, if ever. Again, a lot of precedence tonight.
I, to your goal, I prefer not to use the word table, just being technical. I prefer continued, but that's.
It works for me at this point.
So, I'll, I'll make a motion for item six A, the Old Town Alleyway Right-of-Way Vacation, that we continue this item until our next meeting, currently scheduled for December third.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, very good. We've got a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? This item is continued till the December third meeting. Thank you all. Okay, well, I thought I'd be home having dinner by now. Item six B has been postponed or continued, which is.
Yeah, so let's have a procedural conversation. I think the intent of the applicant was to continue it to December third. They would like it. They just wanted to hold off a few more weeks. But I did, I think we put postponed in the packet. So, what do you think, Carolyn? Do we need a renotice? Could this be a continuance? What would you suggest?
I would recommend a renotice rather than continue, given that any, you know, no one would have shown up here to hear about the continuance because the packet indicated it was going to be postponed and a future hearing date will be determined with updated notice provided, so.
And we don't need a vote on this. Typically, when something was postponed on the agenda, even though it doesn't say it here, it was in the, online, I believe, it said, we don't need a vote on this, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's how quickly I wanted to do six A. All right. Business item seven, on which there is no public comment, land use amendments prioritization.
So, I guess the vacation was much more fun than code talk. Yeah, so, I think it was mentioned previously, our intent is really not to take a deep dive into the proposed list. We really just wanted to give the public an understanding of how we created the list and then our process for prioritization. So, the annual code, the code we use every day, has been with us since 2015. And we like to think of it as a living document. So, we like to look at it, review it, diagnose it every year. And every year since its adoption, I believe, it's had several amendments. So, no different this year. And we do that to keep pace and respond to changes, stay current with town guiding policy and best practice, and then to comply with state legislation. So, the current proposal, we have thirty-three amendments. And this came about, you know, over the past year, staff has worked in the code. We've had issues with the code, so we compile a list. And then we also receive comments from the public. So, we make note of those. And then any sort of prioritization from town council as well, we'll make the list. So, we didn't want to go through this prioritization in a vacuum. We wanted you all involved. And so, we deployed a survey to help you all tell us what was highly critical, and then maybe what's not so important to get to. And so, we are very thankful that you all participated in that survey. So, we took your guys' feedback and averaged your score to get the planning commission priority score. And then we did the same exercise ourselves. We went and rated each of the amendments in terms of critical priority to minimal priority. And then we averaged the two to get this combined priority score. So, overkill, probably. But we wanted a system in place. And so, that got us this effectiveness rating. And that's really just amendment's potential to improve the code. That's our goal. So, then we plotted it on this beautiful scatter plot. And we really wanted to focus on those high priority, low effort items. So, those are the items that are pretty easy for us to draft and get to you, but that will really make a difference in our lives as we review development proposals. And then, oh, sorry, a little feedback. We used that scatter plot to kind of help us come up with this proposed prioritization list. And it, you know, there's some brain damage in this because I think we previously have brought them forward in really large packages. And we don't know if that's helpful, if it's easier to tackle a few at a time each month. And so, our thought was, let's go ahead and implement the amendments quarterly. And then we could, month by month, tackle a few with you all. And our focus will be first on those high priority items with low effort. And then you see that, one, two, three, four, four of those are highlighted in gray, and those are mandated by state law. So, the discussion will be basically general feedback on the proposed schedule. Would you like to see one packet quarterly? Or do you want to break them up monthly? So, you get a few in January, a few in February. Perhaps we could use that second meeting of the month to really look at land use code amendments. So, just general feedback on, on this plan.
I defer to my colleagues first. I've had some thoughts. Let's hear what everybody else has to say.
I think that this is great, what you've done. I appreciate all the effort you've put into it. Personally, I think monthly might be easier because if we wait till quarterly and somebody misses a meeting, then, then you miss all the discussion. And I know as, as the year goes on, somebody's going to miss a meeting somewhere. So, monthly works best for me. And then just a, a comment, I know there's a lot of the ones you've highlighted that are state laws, that, that the state's made a whole lot of laws this year. There may be some thoughts to, do we really need to adopt those? I don't want to adopt something that the state says is great, but may not be great for the town of Tinmouth. And I want to make sure that we at least think about that twice before we, we adopt something. We, we do have to follow the state rules and federal rules and whatnot, but it doesn't mean we need to emphasize.
Sure. And I went and investigated that a little more from your comments. And so, the ones highlighted in red are the ones that we have deadlines for. We will need to implement. And there's certain qualifications, so jurisdictions under a thousand residents. So, there are trigger points of when it applies to us and when it doesn't.
Okay. Mike?
No, I was just going to say the same. If we can do it monthly, I think that would be easier to swallow, right?
Yep. Mike?
I agree, monthly. The smaller bites are, allows for more time to be spent on them.
Okay. I, I like monthly as well. But something that, that Tom had mentioned is, if somebody misses, we need to have the, at least the ability to provide our comments so that you or staff can, can see the comments in our absence.
Nothing wrong with that. Is there?
You concur on monthly?
Yeah, I also agree monthly. And then Logan, elaborate a little bit, then on the second meeting of the month, we can take a deeper dive, or what were you thinking?
Well, I think what we've been seeing is we're not really utilizing the two meetings a month. So, if we maybe focus one of those meetings on more long-range land use issues, we can kind of reserve that meeting to dive in.
And we're going to cover that a little bit, Scott, when we get to the bylaw changes. Yeah, I concur. I, I think monthly is better, especially because whomever said, somebody misses a meeting, it's quarterly, you're going to miss a lot. And I'd rather have everybody up here contributing and everybody on, to the greatest extent possible. You said overkill and brain damage you used. I, you know, I was about to commend the staff. I didn't really see the, the way this was going to, the purpose of this, and I, now I see it. Analog guy that I am, I see how it turned out. And I can see the logic in this. So, I, I commend you on, on the metrics, using the metrics to come to a solution that ends up jiving with our desire to have it done a little bit piecemeal. Understanding, I presume, that if at some point you think something becomes more pressing at your discretion, you'll move it up on the, on the schedule.
Yeah, we can do that and report back to you all. And certainly, we will want to meet with stakeholders, like guide our growth, to talk through the amendments and get feedback from residents as well. So, we'll think through how we want to approach that.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else on this one? Logan, anything else, staff, on this?
I don't think so. Just your blessing to move forward.
There's no vote on this?
No.
Is there? Okay. All right. Thank you. That brings us to item seven B, the draft planning commission bylaws. Scott?
That's you.
That's me. Yeah, I really don't have much of a presentation. What was included in your packet or draft bylaws? The first couple pages are just really references to the town charter municipal code about enabling legislation that creates the planning commission, some membership responsibilities and what have you. When you start getting down around page five, you actually get into the bylaws, clearly broken out by articles, your responsibilities, authority, your membership, kind of roles, responsibility of the commission and staff, and also meeting notices and what have you. There are a few changes from last time. So, one of the things that I think was not included last time is we do have a little bit of a code of ethics reference at the end about some of that. There's some flexibility about scheduling. So, you know, I know Logan presented the idea of monthly code amendments. The commission can also call special meetings, so my former place of employment. We did code amendments in one heavy lift of meeting after meeting. Sometimes it would go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the following week, Thursday, Friday. I mean, they, they were intensive, but we got them all done. So, that's something that we can be, bring your attention to the bylaws. Another important thing is you, as a group, adopts the bylaws. They are not approved by town council, as some of the other boards and commissions are within the town. This is mostly informational for you to read and look over them and, and ask any questions. And certainly, we can incorporate changes to those bylaws moving forward. And this is just a draft. Certainly, we'd like to get them approved and adopted hopefully sometime in the near future. The other things that I think, looking at one of the requirements is actually publishing our agenda. So, at the beginning of the year, committing to certain meeting schedules. So, is it once a month, twice a month? Again, you have the ability to call special meetings. But if you look at our history of the meetings that planning commission has held, we're not hitting twice a month all the time. So, it might make sense to visit that schedule and make sure that we're consistent with the workflow coming in. So, that's all I really have on the, the bylaws. And it's really an opportunity for you all, as a group, to review them and ask questions and get back with any changes you'd like to see.
And we will. And I, there's several things here, and I, with giving due diligence to this too, but I do want to move this as long as quickly as possible. First of all, I think we, I would prefer, we're going to discuss some things tonight. There's any number of things. Scott and I had some discussion about this a while back. I told him at the time, I really appreciated it. And so, let me, there's a little bit of history here. I'll, I'll explain briefly, mainly as it relates to the absenteeism policy. So, when I came on the planning commission, and probably around the time I became chair, when I became more involved in these things, our absentee policy mentioned that there was a, it was either a certain number of meetings a month, or it was a percentage. But it said, other than an excused absence. And I, for one, expressed the opinion, who was going to decide what was an excused absence? So, we, we dropped that, and we came up with what the preceding version of this. But there was still, there has been for some time, there's still been a bit of confusion. So, I, I appreciated when Scott brought this in, that we were going to look at all the bylaws. And and it was going to be in our lap. So, this is a good exercise. So, the first thing I'd like to do, what I'd like to do is kind of a little bit deviate, you all know I like to hear what you all say first. What I'd like to do is go through the things that I've noted here, some of which has been percolating for a while. Anything I gloss over that you want to scroll back to, but we'll stop after each of them. I'll see your thoughts on my thoughts. And, but where I really want to start is, one of the things Scott mentioned a while back at this same time was, this concept of one formal meeting a month, if you will, one regular meeting, and then one special meeting, I think is what we, for a working title. And probably, the first meeting of the month was usually going to be, and there was, the logic was, the time you all needed to prepare what came out of our meeting, that then had to be to council potentially the following meeting. So that's probably the genesis of this. So, as we talk about this, and we talk about regular meeting, special meeting, you'll see where I'm going with this. So is that okay? Go ahead and get started with this, and I promise we will not take as long as we did on the alley vacation. So, I'm jumping all the way to page 46. Do we all have, does everybody get a copy of this? Everybody has? Okay.
Electronically, yep.
And Carolyn, you have it as well?
I do, yes.
Okay. So, this is, I, hopefully, a minor thing. This is just, I think out of deference, we, item, Article 3, Section 1, 1, we're saying we have official members and alternates. All seven of these people are official, in my mind. Carolyn, commissioners, can we change this? We've been referring them for, as regular commissioners and alternates. I'd prefer only for the implication that if you say some, one group is official, it seems to imply the other group is unofficial, and...
No problem.
That's not right.
We can pitch up.
Commissioners, are you good with that?
Yes.
And then Carolyn, that's carried forward in the next paragraph, and any subs, and several subsequent other places, okay? Everybody good? Is there anything preceding that? Anybody? Again, still in Article 3, Carolyn, all the way over in number 5, same thing, you'll find all these. Okay. Now, appointments, reappointments. I believe we've got, I know we've got a bit of a conundrum here. So, and here's what it is. Down through the years, as, for instance, we have three commissioners whose term is ending June, or March 31st, '25, next spring. Okay, typically, what has happened is, the staff, the chair, we've put our heads together and said, "Do we want to see a recommendation to council that this person gets reappointed?" And there hasn't been, to this point anyway, there hasn't been any dissent in that. And then, planning will ask the commissioner, "Would you, if council agrees, would you like to be reappointed?" The conundrum here, Carolyn, is, in A, it says, "When a position's about to become open, et cetera." What we're implying here is that we're going to post the openings, and you're seeing where I'm headed with this, we're going to post the openings. And now what we're doing is, we're essentially saying, "We're going to go out there and conduct a search and see if there's anybody that's better than you." And that, that just doesn't fly with me. I mean, we're not going to have a recommendation not to appoint somebody, or they're going to, you know, they're not going to be, they're probably not interested in serving again. But I don't know exactly what to say, but maybe what we state here is what the process is. Otherwise, we have this implication, if not this assertion, that that's what we're going to do.
Yes, we can draft language to address that. That's not a problem.
Okay, so when we come back to this, we'll... That would be great.
Okay.
Commissioners, I hope everybody sees, everybody who's at stake here sees the wisdom of that. Okay. The, Scott, Carolyn, really appreciate number 2. I think this is a very good, and the logic here is, and this has come into play twice, just since I've been involved as chair. And this was, if we have a pool of candidates, and somebody finishes a close second by acclamation of the search committee, whomever's involved in it, rather than, for a period of one year, rather than going out and conducting a full search, if that person is still interested, council would have the right to appoint that person and save the trouble of a further search. So, really appreciate you all including that provision. Commissioners, any, do you see the wisdom of that?
Yep.
As well? The two circumstances, the big one is our mayor. He wouldn't mind me telling you, we had two excellent candidates, and somebody else was picked, and shortly thereafter, we had another opening, and I, for one, said, "Call him up." So, we see what happened. Got on planning commission, then he got on council, and now he's the mayor, so... All right, anything else with that? I'm on a roll here. Okay. Now, chronic absenteeism. This is where I had a particular interest, only because there was confusion. There was some sentiment to, given that we're all volunteers, Scott and I talked about this, and I concurred with him, some sentiment to liberalizing, if you will, more consideration for more absences. Now, I'll tell you, that's, to me, it's a mixed bag in, you know, my feelings. While I recognize we all have lives, we also want, we have a, an obligation to the public, although, as you can see, I guess, they weren't interested in hearing the rest of this. But, so, I agreed that some consideration there. So, item number 1A, under 5, what we've done essentially is, here, and to quantify this, if we only end up with 12 meetings a year, our policy allows the greater of 25%, which would be 3, or 4. So now, four meetings, that's the trigger point for the chronic absenteeism policy. Okay? The item B was to address situations where, if we don't receive notice, that's a more difficult situation, because if we don't get notice that somebody's not coming, and we, heaven forbid, don't have a quorum. So that was another provision. But Carolyn, this was, I don't believe the word consecutive was intended to be in there. This implies that this only comes into play if it's two consecutive meetings. What the intent was, because the greater seriousness of a non-notice at least 24 hours in advance, was, the greater seriousness of that is, if you have two of those, regardless of when they were within the year's time. So, believe consecutive needs to come out of there. Commissioners, am I on the right track here?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we could certainly take that out. I mean, things do happen in the last 24 hours, but I want to point you also to the second paragraph, which maybe you're going to get to, which is what happens if they do have that chronic absenteeism, which is not automatically coming off of the planning commission. So maybe you can walk them through that. I also noted something as we're talking this through, about 1A, where it's missing whichever is greater 4% or 25%. We may not know how many meetings we're going to have at the beginning of the year, because we cancel so many meetings. So you could miss two meetings.
Yeah, I was...
Is that a problem?
Well, I was going to get to that, because I told you that the two issues in the old, old policy was, going way back was, who's going to make the, determine if it was an excused absence? I sure didn't want to do it, and staff didn't want to do it. But, more importantly, and I won't, this goes way back, I think about nine or 10 years, the question was raised with somebody who was, as we interpreted the policy, chronically absent. I think it's, it may have been before I was chair, even. And they argued, "Wait a minute, a scheduled meeting, you scheduled 24 meetings a year, and so 25% of that is six. I've only missed four meetings." So, I think, again, this would be your purview, we may want to add scheduled, interpreted as meetings actually held. You see? Okay.
I think that's fair.
And held. Okay. So, what Carolyn's referring to, when we changed the policy, we added what is in item 2A, which is, which is, and B kind of takes off on A, and this was the "get out of jail free card," if you will, for lack of a better expression. This was an ability to, if you did violate the policy, then it fell to the chair to contact the chronically absent commissioner and say, "Look, do you want to stay on commission? If so, write a letter, must be received before the next held planning commission meeting, and demonstrating your commitment." And then, you would be on the approve, I don't, does it even say, question me concerning, and a vote of the commissioner? So the vote, commissioners then take a vote, "We've received this letter, we followed the policy, the individual wants to stay on, so do we agree that he or she is still on the commission?" And then, that subject to B, which says, then if there's further, essentially if there's further absenteeisms, then we go back to the original policy. Right, Carolyn? That explained correctly?
Yes, I guess I didn't view the vote of the commissioners as having the ability to not accept the letter. It was more an acknowledgement of receipt. We could probably delete that sentence, because I don't think under the charter that there is an ability to kick someone off by not accepting their letter for chronic absenteeism, because the charter talks about the portion in Section 6, that the town council may remove someone after notice and hearing for inefficiency, neglect of duty, or malfeasance in office. So I do not believe that you can remove someone from commission because of chronic absenteeism.
Yeah, it's, in other words, it's taken care of by council having that within their purview. Yeah, I would agree. I believe that we previously, it did say a vote, but I would agree, as long as the letter is received, then it's acceptable, and it's acknowledged then at that next council meeting that the commissioner's still a commissioner. Okay? Commissioners, are we good with that?
Yeah, Phil, on this one, the only concern I had on this, is it didn't seem it had any stipulation for a medical issue, or like if you had to leave for a month or two to go take care of a family member, or you yourself was in the hospital. And in this case, it sounds like, okay, if I was gone for two months, because I had to care for my mother, who's 92 now, so I get concerned, I could be removed from the commission.
Okay. I, Logan's laughing over there. I had this, I was going to bring this up for discussion, and I've mentioned this, this is the, kind of a special consideration, special consideration, if you will. This, to me, even as I was advocating for this, I was seeing the ill-wisdom, if you will, if that's a word, in this, and here's why. First of all, somebody's got to make that call, okay? Somebody, and when I was about to propose it as part of this, "Why does this do this?" Okay. As I was about to propose this, as part of this bylaw change, I was going to say, "Okay, how about the chair in," and I quickly amend that, "looking for cover, the chair in conjunction with planning would make that determination." Well, the more I thought about it, now it seems like we're going back to the old policy, because it was very much akin, if not exactly like, what's an excused absence? All right. Then I started thinking about the situation you mentioned was one thing. I also thought about a commissioner who has a serious medical issue. Then I started thinking about things that might be covered under the law, for instance, maternity leave, okay? And all of a sudden, I started to think, "Well, I sure don't want to be the one that has to make that determination, and I don't know if staff wants to be the ones." And then I thought, "You know what, really to Carolyn's point, we have a get out of jail free card. We have that."
Right.
What's that? That's the letter.
That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Now, what we don't have is, we don't have anything essentially proactively, because this would have been something where somebody comes in and says, "You said, 'I've got to leave town in indefinite period and look after my mother.'" And that's a proactive approach to it, but I would much rather, I think on balance, deal with this thing and say, "If you came in and said, 'Well, when you're back, if you violated, if you have violated the policy, then we will go through this remedial circumstance.'"
Yeah, so if you violate it again, you'd go through the same process, where Phil would call them and say, "We need another letter," or "We need a resignation." Or, another approach is, you could take this out entirely, or say, you know, "Chronic absenteeism is," define it, and then say, "In the event of chronic absenteeism, you know, the chair or the planning commission could refer this matter to the town council for consideration under Section 6." So remember, the charter gives the town council the ability to make the determination to remove someone after notice and hearing for inefficiency, neglect of duty, or malfeasance in office. So if it really got to be a chronic absenteeism without a reason, then that is a remedy, though that's a pretty public and, you know, maybe not a fun remedy at all to exercise.
I certainly prefer us keeping our own house in order.
Good.
But, so, I'm glad, that's, because we've had some discussion about this, I'm glad you brought it up. I wasn't, I wasn't even going to bring it up, because I, after thinking about it all week long, was inclined to just let it slide. I also, you know, Marty Joyce, who's second longest-serving after me, couldn't be here tonight. This was something that Marty initially broached the subject of some special consideration, while understanding, as I just said, we still have, we still have a last resort, a remedial thing. So, we're going to bring this thing back, I suppose, even though it might make more work. We can sleep on this, if you will, to December 3rd, and I think if we can, Scott, I presume it would probably be good to get this out of the way December 3rd. Carolyn, the changes we make, I think we have one last resort to consider that, but you all see the logic. We have a means. I just, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't like to dodge anything, but I think you'd understand.
No, I think the chair is the appropriate person. I'm serious. I know you don't want that, but I think that's your purview. I mean, that's, you've been elected into that position to do that, so having that authority, I think, is the place it should be. And when I read that, too, I took the letter as that, as, "Hey, there's special situations, because we can't cover everything in this document, that letter's the way to handle special circumstances." And that's all I want to hear. And that's, that's all I want to hear on that.
I, the, you know, when I thought about this, my first reaction was, would we be insensitive if we were known as not proactively taking into consideration? I think that given the fact that this is all done, this, this remedial circumstances done in a very discreet kind of way, I believe, given writing, looking at the policy, I think that covers it. And so let's, let's think about this. I appreciate what you said. I'm not, I'm not ducking it, but, and I would, you know, I personally down to the years, there's, there's virtually nothing I, that hasn't started and stopped with the chair or the previous chair without consultation with our planning staff, in some cases, the town attorney. So if we did this, then I think it should be a discussion of that, but we have a means. I'm not going to beat this one up any further.
Phil, the only thing I'd like to see is an inclusion that it be executive staff, be an executive session. If we're going to be talking about, be it, you know, something of ADA or something along those lines where there is a medical reason, I think it should be an executive session.
You know, we could do that without even putting that on the agenda because the way we've drafted it, I mean, the chair just needs to acknowledge receipt of a letter or we can even take out that they acknowledge receipt of letter on the record. I mean, that can all happen beside, behind closed doors that that's, it's just a letter. Yeah. It would still probably be subject to the open records act. I don't know that we can protect it if you were to specifically get a request for that, but, but otherwise it does not need to be discussed at public session. But if you needed an executive session, which Phil said all his time, he's never had an executive session, so it's very, very rare. But were there a specific situation like that, we could add one, but it'd be so rare that we probably don't need to add it to the bylaws.
Yep. Because I'm certainly looking to do something else we haven't done before.
We're on a streak tonight.
Just to say we've done it. Yeah. So Michael, let me ask you just, and we'll move on quickly. Do you're, are you talking about, should we change what I think is our, our mindset right now and go to adding a policy that talks about this special, special consideration? Or are you talking about, about if we go to, we follow the policy as it's stated right now? Yeah, I, either way, I, I think it should be discreet.
And I think if there is going with this new policy, I think the planning commission and you make a recommendation to the council, you know, get the letter, discuss it. And then, you know, if it is someone taking care of a sick relative, that yeah, it's understandable, they've acknowledged it and, you know, the situation's been resolved, they're ready to return to a full status. I think.
Yeah, I'm still.
Didn't answer it?
You understand, well, yeah, maybe because I'm not asking it the right way. I, I'm suggesting that unless we've changed our mind by December 3rd, when we put this one to rest, that we leave it the way it is, we deal with chronic absenteeism without adding an additional clause that speaks to proactive, it's okay. We understand you can't be here for a long time, so just know your seat is waiting for you when you come back, rather than leaving it the way it is, that if somebody, heaven forbid, has that special circumstance or they just miss meetings, we still have a way to deal with it. Right, Carolyn, you know, I, I think you were talking about, you're talking about the, the circumstance that I was talking about not including this at this juncture.
Okay, now I'm confused here. No, I, I think, I think the mechanism is acceptable as it.
The mechanism.
In the policy.
In any, in any event, okay.
In any, in any event, it can, it can be adapted.
Okay, and it, it stays, there is a, there is a provision if, if we, planning commission by, as I understand, somewhere near, by a vote of a majority could recommend the council, correct? That's a completely different circumstance that a commissioner be removed.
That's correct. That's under section six.
Okay. So that's it, yeah, all right. So we're, okay, we're good. Okay, the rest of this is pretty quick. Anybody else so far, anything else? Officers and staff, section one, page 49. Just to tidy something up, I think it says, it should say, third pair, third sentence, these officers shall be elected the first regular meeting in April of each year or the next meeting thereafter. Because just like this year, we, we didn't elect officers till May or later. We, we didn't have a couple of meetings right there.
That sounds good. We could also put until the replacements are elected, the current officers continue in their position. That way also it's clear that they're continuing.
Probably a good idea.
It may be more than a year, it may be a year and two months if, or a year and weeks.
Because we did.
Exactly.
Although we didn't have meetings, but one way or the other, it's covered. Okay, everybody good with that? Article five, meetings, section one, meetings. What we're talking about, and I agreed, I agreed with the staff, is essentially a regular special meeting. The only question I asked at the time, or statement I made at the time was, I would suggest, first of all, when, when do you all see this, this going into effect? I mean, we're, we were just a half hour ago talking about land use code things. It's very possible that we may have meetings every two weeks to clear the docket on those. So it may be moot for a while, but when do you, when do, when does this, these bylaw changes go into effect?
I think the bylaws will go into effect upon adoption, but if you look at the first sentence, it says they will adopt annual meeting schedule that will include at least, oh, at least one meeting every month. So if you decide for the next year, it just gives you the flexibility year by year to decide. So you could decide to choose two meetings per year and adopt that as your schedule.
Okay. The only thing I have to say about this is, I guess I'd ask you, don't get too comfortable with that, that second meeting. I'd say for the time being, continue to, to, hold's not the right word. Think of first and third Tuesdays as meetings until noticed, notified otherwise, but we're going to, we're going to do our best on, for instance, on the first Tuesday to say, and we're not moot, not going to meet on the third Tuesday. Is it, and I guess I ought to not ask, but is that reasonable, staff, or is it likely that we might not know until a week out? Which kind of reinforces my point about, don't get too comfortable thinking, okay, we're definitely not meeting on those third Tuesdays. Will, will we know two weeks in advance?
Not always, but so, so I guess the thing, we're overthinking this.
Yeah.
Like tonight's agenda, we found out after the packet, or as a packet was being put together, that the petitioner wanted to continue, but it was posted wrong. So I mean, that, in that scenario, if we were to have an annual meeting schedule of two meetings per month, would we know tonight what's coming up in two weeks? Well, we already know we have one thing coming up two weeks from now.
Two things.
Because of that continuance and you pushed one thing. So most times I think we would know, but I mean, I think there's scenarios where, I don't know when some of our comments are due, but it probably wouldn't always hit that stride of would we know what's going to happen in two weeks? Because somebody will inevitably want to continue their case because it's not ready to be moving forward, then we might have anything on that meeting agenda.
Okay, so I agree, we're overthinking it to that point. I'd suggest, we just still think we're meeting on the first and third for the time being until otherwise.
And it was drafted to be flexible so that we're not nailing you down to two times a month on every Tuesday, no matter what. So I think there was a question this year on election day.
Yeah.
You know, so most places probably wouldn't be a good idea to have a plan commission meeting on election day, but town was open that day, we had to come to work. So I think those instances, again, the way the bylaws are written, gives the flexibility to schedule those things accordingly by doing that annual calendar where well in advance, we could have said, hey, we're not doing plan commission on November 5th or whatever election day was this year.
Yeah.
And, and so that gives you, gives us all the ability to look out ahead, so we're not just by default doing first and third every month, no matter what.
Okay. Now I got one more big one, and this is, I bet you're not going to nod, I don't know if you're going to nod your heads. We, the definition of scheduled meeting, and as it relates to our absenteeism policy, I happen to think that work sessions, joint sessions with council especially, perhaps even bus tours, that was, that was very instructive, the, the bus tour of the developments. I happen to think that the absenteeism policy should apply, especially because we're more, we're liberalizing it and we're keeping our policy about the, about the remedial circumstances. I happen to think that it should apply to all meetings other than if we announce well, well in advance that it is optional. I, I'd hope you see my view on this point, particularly those of you just joining recently. Again, there's, we have, you have some absenteeisms banked perhaps, but I happen to think that we talk about scheduled meetings, it should be any scheduled meeting regardless of the, of the type of meeting. Does anybody? Because right now, right now, most everything has been optional other than these formal meetings and, and there's been quite a few that we had, I think about Carolyn, we had a joint session with council, Carolyn talked about ex parte and some other things. That was, that was big. That was important stuff, if you will. So I'd like to see if, if you are in agreement, I'd like to see, Carolyn, I'd like to see some consideration if that, if I'm not out of line to have that included.
It's certainly a policy issue, but typically absentee policies would apply only to regular meetings. So when I heard the word scheduled, I in my mind thought that was equivalent to a regular meeting on those every other day, weeks because of the fact that the joint meetings, we can't predict right now when those are going to happen. And so if someone is planning a vacation schedule and they plan it on an off week, they're not going to know it right now or in advance necessarily if there's that special meeting. So that's how I had considered that language of scheduled as a regular meeting.
So Phil, I have to agree with what Carolyn just said is, I, because my wife and I do travel a lot and I specifically do all of our schedules so that I always have the first and third Tuesday available to make sure I'm at meetings. So if I don't know what the schedules are, you know, with the pop ups, then those might be ones I end up missing. And it could be, I would miss four in my case. And I wouldn't want that to happen and count, count against me. But I concur with you. I think if we're available, we should be attending those meetings, if it's a joint meeting or. I got a lot out of the session that we did with the House stuff and that. But there again, Logan, what she did for it is she sent out the survey to everybody and said, what dates are you available? And we were able to collectively, well, unfortunately, there were some people who still couldn't make those even though we got to prioritize them. And so I, I hate to see that be counted against us as a strike, but in my opinion.
Well, I appreciate that point. In fact, I'm, what I'm talking about is the, are those that are, are scheduled, regularly scheduled meetings. Those are on, those are first and third.
Yes, that's how I considered it. So joint meetings with council might be on those first and thirds. They often are because we, you know, the council meeting dates are full of council time. So it's very, you know, it's not unusual to, to schedule on those, but sometimes also we schedule before council meeting on a council meeting date and we start it at four o'clock and it's that special meeting. So my, what I anticipated is we would come to you with a resolution to set all of your meeting dates for 2025 and that would be your, your scheduled meetings once you adopted that.
I like that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. That was, that was my intention. Because if, if we're going to schedule a work session, it's going to be scheduled on a, on a regular meeting date.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement that the scheduled meetings are the official meetings of this body, not any extra bling outside of that. So, you know, the purpose of us notifying possible quorum is to help cover us, to make sure if anybody's thinking there's meetings outside of that. So the housing tour, any other things outside or work sessions, I wouldn't call those as part of the, the requirement, I think is what your question is, right Phil?
Yeah, but we're, we're, we're saying.
We certainly encourage.
Policy applies to scheduled meetings, scheduled meetings is, are defined as those essentially.
Special meetings that we call, but those, those extracurricular activities, I don't think would be fair to count that against.
Yeah, those are 24, essentially 24 predetermined, meaning essentially the first and third or as determined early on. I don't, I can't ever think of us having a meeting other than on first and third Tuesdays. Okay. Everybody good with that? Okay. Anything else on the bylaws? I believe that was everything that I noted.
I've got one, Phil. Again, I, I thought that bylaws overall were good as well, but the one thing I, it's something that you and I had talked about back in the past as well, is if somebody, in, in not wanting to violate the ex parte stuff, is if for some reason we, one of the commissioners were unable to make a meeting, whether it be a working session or a regular meeting, is it something that we have to add to the bylaws to get around this, but to allow that person to at least send their comments or questions ahead so that you have them or somebody could bring them up on their behalf to be addressed?
The one time, what prompted, I interested, the one time we had a commissioner involved ex parte communication was that very circumstance. So I need some help here. What is the, I, I think there should be some means, I think, what's the best way to do this?
Yeah, why don't we have them go to staff so that your comments can be sent to Scott or to, we'll have, we'll indicate which staff member wants to receive the comments and then we can then share them at the meeting. It's, you can't have a proxy, so you can't give your vote to someone else, but if you have a question that you want to have addressed, if you provide it to staff, then we can prepare to answer that question as part of our presentation.
And you can't have a proxy.
And then if it's a concern, if it's, it's, if it's more than a question and you want a statement to be considered, you're actually a public citizen. So then it becomes a public comment, that you'd be submitting that comment not as a planning commission member, but as a part of the public comments.
Excellent. That, that would be great. So when we were to make that, we label it as a question or as a comment and it be dealt appropriately? That sounds good.
Everybody good with that? Yep. We also had the provision for, in some cases, to, to call in or, or link in and in some cases, I remember. Only if it was quasi administrative and even then, done very seldom. Carolyn, am I correct, it was, it was only quasi administrative and then, or was that only during COVID? COVID was everything, but I thought, it's been my understanding for quite a while, goes back pre-Carolyn, we did have, allow it for quasi administrative matters.
Well, I think that's a policy decision for you in terms of how you want to establish it. As long as the meeting is open to the public in the sense that it is streamed. As long as the meeting is open to the public in the sense that it is streamed, that if it is an entire, if you ever have an entirely electronic meeting, such as in a case of COVID, then the public needs to have a way to view the meeting and participate in the meeting in the public hearing sections. So even a quasi judicial item can be held electronically, that's what you did in COVID. And so we can certainly add some language here. I mean, if you want to say, you know, I mean, it would be basically, right now, without saying anything about it, it'd be the chair's discretion. So if it were something like a pandemic, it would be the chair's discretion to determine that the meeting would be held electronically. We can formalize that by adding some language, if you'd like us to propose something.
Yeah, I, when asked in the past, there's been a couple of circumstances. It was, it was, has not been my preference to have that circumstance. But if it, if the, if the, if we're, I, what I hear you saying is, if we're announcing that for various circumstances, health reasons or whatever, we are conducting the meeting electronically, that's a different circumstance, then it kind of speaks for itself that, that the commissioners themselves are meeting electronically.
That's right. And so it doesn't anticipate a situation where one member participates electronically. So this probably would be something appropriate to add, if you want to say that it's either an elect.
For admin, for quasi administrative or, and/or quasi judicial even?
I think what you could say is, it's the, it's the chair's discretion in situations where, I'd need to work on the language, but when supported by public health and safety reasons to hold the meeting electronically, okay? If you want me to add, or meetings that are purely administrative, I don't think you have many meetings that are purely administrative though. So that really doesn't, I don't think that adds much. But we could also add that members need to be present in person. When we talk about being present at the meeting or being absent, we could clarify that present is being here in person, if you'd like to clarify that, unless the whole meeting is required.
I tell you why it's not, to be very frank, not my preference to just blanket allow, especially quasi judicial. It just opens the Pandora's box to, well, I don't want to violate the attendance policy. And so it, it's just too easy to, to call in. So plus council doesn't, I can't remember a circumstance where council has had, other than health reasons, council doesn't do it, right? I don't, a circumstance where they've had, especially in quasi judicial matters, and certainly not in even administrative matters, where they've had somebody calling.
That's correct. We have discussed if there were ever a public safety issue where we had to close the town hall, what we would do. And there are some circumstances where council could potentially meet electronically if they had to meet from the police office because there was a, I don't know, a gas leak or something in the town hall. There's, it's hypothetically possible, but very unlikely. So I can look at what the town code says, town council does, but it is town council's policy that members are generally there in person unless the meeting is electronic. And I think then it would be the chair's determination to decide when a meeting had to be held electronically.
I think we've made a provision here a few minutes ago for somebody to express their thoughts, and I, I think that should be sufficient. You still have a means to, to make your feelings known without us having to jump through the hoops that are necessary and, and open that, open that precedent. Okay? Is that okay?
Yep.
You good with that? Okay. Other questions about this? No? Okay, we don't need a vote on this. Carolyn's going to come back. Again, staff, Scott, really appreciate you bringing this up some time ago and, and us following through on this. It, it's been very helpful. All right, moving on very quickly, reports. So I have, I have three things. First of all, if you recall the officers' elections back in May or whenever it was, I, I believe I campaigned on the promise that we were going to get our packets on Tuesdays. What, what I neglected to do was consult thoroughly with staff, who is the one really having to put that together. So I may have, like certain other recently elected politicians, may have overpromised and underdelivered. I, I believe that's still a goal of ours, to do that, but that's on me. So I also am not necessarily going to lower taxes or, or protect, protect the border. So that's on me. It's still a goal, but you can blame me. Okay? We are meeting on the third. Last thing is, last night, most of you are aware, I'm representing planning, representing planning commission on the Old Town Steering Committee, whose charge is to, to see what recommendations can be forthcoming to council in due course here as far as developmental proposals and others related to that in Old Town. Scott and staff kicked that off last night very ably. First meeting was organizational. That meeting is the first and third Mondays. So don't get too comfortable because they, they did put in a provision, planning commission chair or designee. So certainly going to see, to the extent that somebody has something to do. But it is open to the public, and it is interesting, and it's, it's an interesting subject, surely, and an interesting process.
And where is it held?
Wherever they could find a room. Last night it was at Goodman Street. Two weeks now, I don't think you knew where it was going to be, did you?
It was going to be in the community room.
The community room. But it's open to the public, and there's three minutes, more or less. Again, that's a, it's, it's rather informal, an opportunity for public comment, so certainly welcome.
And the notices are posted on the town website. It's under the same place as council agendas. If you keep scrolling down, you'll get to the Old Town Steering Committee.
It's on there. So that was it, and I appreciate being, being included in that. Commissioners, anything else? Who else? Staff, anything else before we adjourn? Very good. By the way, the, you know, if anybody asks you about these steering committee meetings, they are open to the public. I meant to mention last night before we adjourned the meeting that people should spread the word. I, I, I'm hoping more community members do attend this, particularly, there's a lot of people that are interested in this subject matter.
How many people are on the committee?
There are 12. There are six community development director or designee, mayor or designee, and he, he's designated, at least for the time being, Jeremy, the mayor pro temp, the public works director, the town manager. Logan is on there, not formally.
No, we're just staff support, so.
Just not staff.
So there's 11, there's 11 members. There's five ex officio and six appointed members, so.
And moi, of course. And then six community members. Yeah. Anything else? We're adjourned. Thank you all very.
So are you protecting this from Rogue County?